Let me know when you are ready.
You're ready, Mr. Mayor?
You ready? We're live. Assuming that's a yes. Today is Wednesday, July 19th, 2023. It is now 6:00 PM, and this is a regular City Commission meeting and the preliminary budgets submitted for 2023-2024 fiscal year. This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Who will be given the invocation? Would anyone like to volunteer, give the invocation? Deputy Chief, would you like to be voluntold?
Is, uh, did we get somebody to do the invocation over there?
I, I, I made sure of it, but if it didn't show up, you're being voluntold again.
Well, then I'm gonna read the one that I was gonna read tonight, if that's okay with you all. If I have to, I have to. You're gonna hear it twice, then. Dear Heavenly Father, we welcome you into this place today. May your gracious and merciful power turn this ceremony into significance, this meeting into significance. May you bless Edward Silva being sworn in today as well as his family, and bring out great fruits to that which shall now be fulfilled. Guide and protect him always, as his duties are difficult and crucial to employees and residents alike. God, we thank you for your presence amongst all we strive to do, to serve our city and our community. Lord, continue to bring about conversation instead of conflict, so we can work together through your will for your plan as you would show us how. We give thanks for all you are in our lives and make this declaration today in your almighty name. Amen.
Thank you. That was beautiful. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item three, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Here.
Commissioner Candida Blanca. Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for June 21st, 2023, regular commission meeting.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Item five, public comments.
Anyone here for public comments? Seeing none, next item.
Item six, report of the City Manager.
Uh, there is no report tonight. Uh, we have the budget hearing, so.
Yes, well, we're hearing a lot from you, so, next item.
Item seven, report of the City Attorney.
There's no report by the City Attorney.
Thank you. Next item.
Item eight, report of the City Engineer.
No report. Next item.
Item nine, community reports.
I guess I'll just report on the record here. Earlier this week, I was, uh, given an appointment by Governor DeSantis to serve on the Transportation Planning Organization of Miami-Dade County. So I look forward to, uh, to representing our city and all of the cities in Miami-Dade County. That's my, that's my position, um, that aren't represented on TPO, and enhancing our transportation policy and funding, and making sure we build out a smart network. So I wanna, on the record, thank Governor DeSantis for his trust in me, and, and I look forward to serving in that new capacity. Next item.
Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening. Item 11, under new business agenda item, item 11A. This is a first reading, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, implementing a smoking ban in and around City of West Miami parks and facilities, providing for ordinances in conflict, codification, severability, and effective date.
Do you want a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes, and the second reading and public hearing.
Madam Clerk, one more. Before we continue, I want to congratulate the, the Mayor Diaz-Padrón, who was, eh, nominated to the TPO. So he's a member of the TPO now. So we have the Mayor there, so I hope you get something for our city.
Yeah, we, we, we're, we're right now, we don't have great access to, to that line, so I'm looking forward to changing that.
Our city now is over 10,000.
Yeah.
So, once the city is over 10,000.
Yeah, West Miami will get, will get very good.
Get another scale.
We'll get very good representation on there, I, I, I believe.
A skateboard in every pot.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna say that the public hearing and second reading is, will be scheduled for August 16th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Should we proceed?
Yes, please.
All right.
This is, yes, Commissioner?
No, he was saying yes.
Okay. A preliminary budget for fiscal year 2023-2024 submitted. Item 11B, this is submission of the preliminary city budget for fiscal year 2023-2024 by City Manager.
And good evening, and again, I wanna second those, uh, words about your nomination to TPO, that is a big thing, and I'm sure you'll rise to the occasion. Um, I wanna start off with a, a presentation and a slideshow. I don't think it's ever been done like this before, but I'm trying to simplify it so that, uh, the residents of West Miami can understand how we put together our, our budget and go forward. This is a presentation, uh, preliminary presentation for our budget. First of all, let's start off by the numbers. Um, as Commissioner Suarez just said, we are by, by the, um, we are at 11,300 people, which 53.7% of our houses are homesteaded, and our median income is a little bit lower than the average for Miami-Dade County. Um, as we all know, inflation has been something that's been on everybody's minds. Not only inflation and the fact that insurance rates are going up and quite a lot of things are really affecting our cost of living. Last year, it saw an inflation rate of around 8%. This year, it was forecasted at 9, and although they're saying it's gonna moderate, it's still gonna go up about 5% next year. Um, the average sales price in the City of West Miami has increased 12.5% year to year, and the median price is $450,000. Last year's budget was at $8.2 million and change. Our finance department, and, and this is kudos to our staff and to our finance department, we're projecting a surplus of $650,000. Um, the audit that was done by GEMRT, the CPAs, showed that we had an unrestricted fund balance of 3.3. You add it up, and we have over $4 million in reserves, unrestricted reserves of, as of last year. But we all did change that policy a little bit, a little bit around, and we'll talk about it in a second. Um, by the numbers, you can see there here on this, on this slide, how our reserves have been going up year to year. Significant after 2019, some very hard decisions were made to allow a little bit more density around the edges of our commu-, uh, of our city, and that is when our reserves started to go up. You all pass an ordinance, is one of the very first things I proposed, and thanks to you all, you also got behind it, where we put a lockbox on quite a few things. We put a lockbox on operating cash flow, community growth, litigation reserves, asset repairs, declared emergencies, and I, and with the reserves that we're projecting this year, we have funded every one of these categories. And that will, that's huge, because that gives you fiscal solvency for the future. Some of the herons, the challenges that we faced as, as I've taken over the helm, and, and some of it is like we've had some construction delays on the gymnasium, gymnasium that forced us to walk away from a $200,000 FERDAF grant. We've had a, the, the construction began without a performance bond, which is something that shouldn't have happened, but it did, and we've rectified it since. The delays from the construction of the gym, which now is forecasted to be built and finished sometime in November, is gonna affect the revenues and res-, and membership drive. We have had and have found that there is a lack of equipment that's hurt staff in, in their maintenance efforts in trimming swales and bulk pickup, leading to damaged streets, uh, damaged trees, and higher costs because of longer completion times. We had a tree trimming truck that was awarded to us two or three years ago. We still do not have it. A sister city, Miami Shores, has theirs already, and that is because we found out that we pushed it back until 2025. Uh, we have no competitive debris cleanup and bid process performed. We have had a, a procurement process that has led to, to increased costs. Too many single bid items and too many last-minute items being brought to the council for approval on an emergency basis, and that's something that we should not be doing as a city. Um, we've had resident complaints that are simply not being tracked. We don't have very good communications. We are missing or have to update some of our software to help us, help us improve our reporting systems. You all know this, and I'll say it now, some of the employer morale has led to, has led to an understandable unis-, unisization effort by some employees, and that's strictly, that's directly attributable to the mistreatment that we had of some of our employees. We had a two-tier payment health insurance policy that led to issues. We lost a car charging federal grant because we didn't comply with the terms. Um, and then some of the things that we'll talk about a little bit more going forward. We have not earmarked any of the ARPA grant funding, which is over $4 million. That puts us in a crunch, because that all has to be committed and contracted and approved by you, the Commission, by the end of fiscal year 2024, by December 31st. We also had a mini bus that was purchased for the community center, which, um, I had a meeting with the community center patrons, and their complaint was about the bus that not, wasn't ADA compliant, and it lacked a lot of comfort. These are things that are called, all easily could have been, uh, rectified along the way, and they weren't. And these are some of the challenges, but certainly not all the challenges that we're looking at going forward. Where are we today? On July 1st, we got the property appraisers assess values. Um, and that's what's shown here. Oh, I'm sorry, I hit the wrong way. Sorry about that. By, by the beginning, by the beginning of August, we have to have a maximum millage rate sent to the property appraisers office, which is what we're here today. We're proposing a maximum millage rate of 6.25. Your current year rollback rate is 5.9928. And sometime in late August, the tax appraisers offices will send out the notices to all the property owners. Um, in summary, the departments have all been talking to the off, our office, and we have gotten their preliminary wants and needs. We can now make changes through our budget between now and the first public hearing, September the 5th at 6 o'clock, or by our second, uh, meeting, which is September the 20th at 6 o'clock. It is estimated that our, we see, we're seeing an increase of 8% in terms of our property values from last year to this year. The year before was 14.2. We were proposing a 1.5, I'm sorry, this slide didn't get changed. We were proposing a 1.5 millage rate, but at 6.25, it's over 5%. This would mark the second consecutive budget that this council, this commission will have approved with a millage rate drop. The, the, the rate that we're proposing is 6.25. It transmits to the cities that we are serious about trying to get our fiscal house in order. How is the budget made up? The total budget is made up of general revenue funds. That's property, utility taxes, franchisees, and et cetera, and that funds general operating. Restricted funds are monies that come in from grants, CITT, local options and fuel taxes, and they usually, and/or sanitation and water and sewer, and that goes into the restricted operating costs. And then capital reserve funds can be, can, can have funds coming from grants, ARPA, general funds, or everything else, but capital projects are things that were, that are basically investments in the long term for our ci-, for our city. This is an organizational chart of the West Miami, as I envisioned it going forward. Obviously, we start off by the residents, followed by the commission, charter offices, and then all the other departments and divisions of our city. Tax revenues for the last 10 years, as you can see, our tax revenues have increased steadily since 2015, 16, to a point now where if we left it at the same rate, it would be $5.3 million. But we're, we're proposing a rate drop, so that will change. However, if you look on the right-hand side, that is our millage rate over the years. And at 6.25, it's a 27% reduction of the millage rate since the high watermark in 1996 to 2006, and it would also be the lowest millage rate in over three decades. I keep hitting the wrong button, guys, I'm sorry. Assessment, again, this is from, from the tax appraisers office, showing the 8% increase in the tax assessments. This shows our homesteaded properties, which is roughly around 50% of all residential homes. Our homesteaded, 45% of the total stock. The differences in these numbers are always the, uh, all the apartments that we have around the city. Overall millage rate comparisons, and this shows the millage rate that takes into account that everything that goes into your tax bill. There are five major components of this. It's the City of West Miami, the countywide rate, school, regional, and Children's Trust. Last year, our overall tax rate was 22.5631, with only seven municipalities having a higher rate. The new rate that we're proposing tonight will have us drop to 15, which is right around the middle of the road, which is a great, it's a great start, great place to be. Um, here's a, here's the initial millage rates for all the cities around us. Um, you can see, for an example, City of Miami's rate, 7.87. Miami Beach is a little bit over 7. Coral Gables is 5.6. Hialeah is a 6.3, and so on and so forth. This is a good comparison, so you can see what the millage rates in the cities around us are at. Now, how is your tax dollar distributed? There's a misconception that the tax bill that everybody gets is what you pay, and that's really not true. Um, out of every tax dollar that, that's paid by, by a resident, 36% goes to the county, 31% goes to the public schools, 29% goes to our city, and then you have another 4% that goes both to Children's Trust and/or regional rates. So a substantial amount of your tax dollar goes to places that are not the City of West Miami. When you take that into account, you will see that, uh, our average taxable rate is $178,000, which means that the amount that's paid for every bill is about $1,118. Out of that $1,118, I further divided it as to what is spent on an annual basis in each department. For police, as an example, you're paying $194 for a year's worth of, of police services, and we have a fantastic public safety department, down to what we pay for our commission, which is a little bit over $2 a year. Most rates are between $2 and $45, and that's a great place to be. This is broken, broken up into a different way in a pie chart that shows that law enforcement is the, the biggest chunk of our expenditures, as it should be, but, and at 36%, followed by general government at 33%. So now let's talk about the budget and the departments, and we'll go on, uh, through these one at a time. The first thing I need to tell you all is I've taken, I have taken out certain things that I believe are general government and shouldn't have been put into each one of the departments, and that's basically, um, uh, some, some insurances, general liability and insurances. In terms of the, of the City Commission, your, your budget is $52,500, and we've increased representative services for you all, uh, for you all, so that you have more money that you can, you can, uh, use as, on your constituents. Uh, your overall budget is point fi-, one-half of a percent of the overall general government budget is spent on the City Commission. A new department here is the City Clerk. The City Clerk is at $156,000. It's 1.6% of the overall budget, and that number is inflated, because as we all know, in April, there's an election, so you have to put money aside for the cost of the elections. That's something that will come on and off every other year as we go along. The, the legal department is at $120,000. They are 1.3% of the total budget. The executive department, which is my department, is 5.5% of the total budget, but we're adding a couple positions here. We're, we're gonna be have, adding procurement so that we can ensure that we do procurement process correctly from here on in, and to make sure that we do all the reporting that needs to be done in a, in a viable and, and manageable way. Considering everything that has, we're coming up in terms of projects that we're putting forth tonight, that's a very important, uh, key element to our employee, our employees here. Um, I'm putting passports and special events as a division of our, of my office, but as a set aside. Their cost is $316,000, and that is 3.3% of the overall budget. Communications, another division, uh, to help us be able to get our, our message and, and, and communicate with our residents on a two-way street. Us to communicate to them, but for them to be able to communicate back to us in a much more, uh, in a much better manner than what we're doing now. That's only 2.8% of the total budget. Finance is 3, 3.3% of the, of the budget. If you look at it compared to last year's, uh, passports, IT, and other functions have been removed out of this, out of this department, so that they better fit where they should be and not be put into the finance department. Public safety, the police department, roughly 36% of our overall budget. The one nice thing to talk about this budget, which is, I'm sorry, it's $3.3 million, is we're gonna be able to add one more officer to our ranks. So we are very much taking care of our, our residents by adding another officer out in the streets. And we're also gonna be starting up, uh, again, bicycle patrols so that we can have community outreach and, and, and make sure that our officers and our residents interact. Facility maintenance is 2.8% of our budget, um, which is roughly where it was last year. Public Works is 8.4% of our budget, $793,000. The important thing here is that in talking to staff and in talking to the, to the directors, they needed a couple other people to be able to, to really be able to maintain and do the things in a correct fashion, and we have been able to add those off, those, those staffing members into our roster. The garage is $101,000. It's 1.1% of the total budget. And then lastly is general government, which is where we put things such as medical and life insurance and the general liability instead of having them, uh, in each, in each department. And this is 33.5, 34% of our overall budget. If you look at the projection side, the expenditures projections, we're projecting $9.4 million general fund, uh, budget, and we're expecting a revenue side of $9.6 million. And that is at the current proposed rate of 6.25. I do wanna talk about parks. I'm, I've lumped together the community center, our, our Rebecca Sosa Recreation Center, and our parks altogether. It's, in my mind, they're all related. They should be together, and it makes sense from a, from a fiscal point of view. So when you do that, you will see that the revenues that we expect are about $1.775 million. And if you go through the expenditures, you will see that we're right there at $1.775 million. So without having to move money into the community center and lumping everything together, we're basically covering the def-, we're covering the deficit that the community center has given us year in and year out. So let's talk about our restricted funds. These are funds that are derived from income that's earmarked for specific purposes, such as sewer, water, storm wa-, storm water fund, sanitation, transportation, and our building fund. Starting with sewer, we have two phases, which again, uh, for lack, for ease of being able to follow this, I've lumped them together. The revenues from our sewer side is $1.1 million. And if you look at the expenditure side, you will see that it turns out to be the same amount. So our sewer expenditures and residential's balanced, which is what you want and hope for, and we've, we've been able to do so. Again, with the water side, we expect a revenue projection of $1,057,000, and our expenditures are slightly below it at $1,043,000. If you look at storm water, it's the same story. We expect a revenue stream of $201,000, and we're expending $196,515. Sanitation is the very first one that we have to do a transfer from general government. For us to be able to balance this budget, we're transferring in $75,000 from the general government to make it whole. Um, Miami-Dade County has raised their, their fees on us, and this is something they're gonna have to keep an eye on as we go forward, but for right now, we're being able to handle that out of, by augmenting the revenues from the general government. Uh, the, the revenues for the Surtax Transportation CITT, that's $493,000, and we're spending just slightly below it, so we're fine there as well. And then lastly is the building department. Um, we are transferring in from general funds $175,000 to make the building department function. Couple things to note here, though. We did move the code enforcement officer out of Public Works to this department, because they're kind of, they go hand in hand. Code enforcement works with buildings, so we put that, uh, salary into here, which kind of skews the numbers a little bit. But, but it's, from a technical point of view, they should be together, and that's why it's here. And it, and it does mean that we have to augment it from our general funds. So let's talk about the proposed capital projects funds, and guys, if you have questions anywhere along the way, please let me know. You know, we do have a little thing to go to after this, so. We have, let's talk about what we have in terms of grant funding. These are monies that we'd be unable to get from state and federal, and some monies that we've been able to put away in some silos that we have had in savings. As of, as of today, we have over $16 million that have been allocated to us in terms of, of grants, ARPA funds, or monies that we have set aside. $16 million we have on a set aside. If, now let's break this down a little bit more. There's a little bit over $4 million, $4,093,000 that comes from ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. This is the money that the general government gave us for, uh, for COVID. Um, that money has to be allocated by no later than December 31st, 2024, or you must give it back, and it must be spent by no later than 2026. If we don't allocate it, which means that we have to go through the bid process, we have to come up with whatever the plans are, we have to get your approval of this commission, then we have to award the contract. If we don't get all that done before December 31st of 2024, we risk losing that money. So what are we proposing in terms of ARPA funding? Everything from our, our marquee signs to our community center roof, things for Cooper Park. We are hoping to go into a long-term agreement with the school board to turn in the open park, the open field at the Savania School into a park for us, for our use, for our residents' use on weekends. Um, we're adding a new passenger bus for our after-school program. The one that we have now has no air conditioner, um, and it's not in good shape. It has to be done. Buying a forklift. Um, we're gonna start a cleanup City of West Miami campaign in which we're gonna buy the 55-gallon garbage bins for every single resident and, and hand them out for free. We will not be changing the way we pick up sanitation. If you just wanna take out your little bag and put it by the street, you're more than welcome to do so, but we're trying to make it easier on our employees, because if we have these 55-gallon, uh, things that we can pick up by the truck, it'll make us much more efficient. We can pick them up quicker and have less liability by doing so in a rather quick way. Um, we need to buy some software for websites, procurement, communications, uh, and finance, and then we're gonna go into doing some half-street closures. There's an issue on 11th and 12th Street and 57th Avenue near a strip shopping center, where we're thinking of doing the same thing that we did near Latin America and trying to close it down, add some parking, and take out the commercial use out of the residential areas. Uh, we have to replace our pump stations. Then we wanna do traffic calming on 16th Street and 63rd Avenue, which we've had a series of accidents there that we need to resolve. And then we, we start on doing some drainage out of ARPA, drainage on, on one, two, three, about five or six places. Um, we also wanna enhance our playgrounds and change it from the mulch that we have right now to a rubberized ground, which would be easier on the kids, and, and we'll cut down on, on, on scrapes. We wanna enhance our tree canopy by adding more trees throughout our city. And then there's something that we're working on with the Commissioner Cabrera's office, which is called And then there's something that we're working on with the Commissioner Cabrera's office, which is called the Homesteaded Senior House Beautification Fund, where we will be giving money that he will be, he will be augmenting for homesteaded seniors to be able to upgrade their houses, their facades, their landscaping, and help us beautify our city. The next silo of money that we have is some grant funding specifically coming from the Department of Environmental Protection from Florida. We have two grants there, there's 3.5 million dollars left. And that just nicely dovetails with what the Phase 2 water line replacement is. So all that money will go into Phase 2 water line replacement, that as we all know, we need to be able to do. The first portion of this money, the first 2 million dollars, also has a deadline of December 31st, 2024. So that's another one that we're going to have to get, um, activated and moving on very quickly. Thanks to the mayor's efforts, we've been able to get an EPA grant from the federal government of about 3 million dollars. That with some of our water reserves will allow us to do Phase 3 and Phase 4, the water line replacement. And with this, we have just about done all the city's water line replacements, which is an amazing thing to be able to do with grants and not have to take it out of our taxpayers' monies. Some of the other things that we're doing from some other grant funding, uh, sources is more, some more storm drainage that we have to have on 10th Street. Um, we're taking out of the recreational fund. Obviously, we're going to apply for FERDA, but if we don't, I wanted to have the money set aside for this. I want to be able to do the baseball field lightings and get the pickleball courts, which is a grant that we lost at the beginning of this year, and be able to get them going. There's certain things here that we need to do, like replace the elevator in our city hall that's, that's giving us problems, that we want, need to make sure that we get that fixed. Um, we want to fix the parking at the West Miami Community Center. The parking lot there isn't seeing its better days. And we want to do something really nice, considering that we're doing events there, like the Fourth of July, which was highly successful thanks to our staff, and maybe put papers there to make that a nice little event space. We need to, we need to roll out our street signage. Uh, Commissioner Cabrera's tree trimming truck, we need to see how we can expedite it and get it done quickly. Through Commissioner Cabrera's office, we're also going to be talking to them to see if we can do corridor star, corridor studies for 57th, 62nd, and 67th Avenue to see how we can beautify all, all three of those main corridors and make them a nice, friendly landscaped, uh, boulevards. And then lastly, we've also recently applied for a bicycle, for a bike study grant for the Southwest 16th Street Bicycle Corridor. In summary, our general funds, our expenditures are 9.5, and our revenues are projected at 9.6. In parks, it's a wash at 1.775. Restricted funds, our expenditures are, are at 3.98, our revenues are at 4. And then a summary of all the capital projects, at the end of the day, you'll see that we are projecting an expenditure of a little bit over 11 million dollars, which will leave us still 3.8 million dollars of funding that we can do at a later date. Because with everything that we're doing here, this is pretty, it's, it's a pretty challenging task that we have in front of us. So one of the, some of the changes that we're doing for 23, 24, we're adding an additional police officer, we're adding employees, communications, procurement, additional landscaping. We're finishing up the gymnasium and putting in the equipment at Cooper Park. We are proposing an art and public place, uh, sculpture in one of our roundabouts. We're doing our sidewalk restorations, we're doing our lights at the pickleball, lights at the baseball field and the pickleball courts, a website, substantial water and drainage improvements, a comprehensive plan that will allow us to lower heights. We've upgraded our special events threefold, and we have commenced, if it didn't start today, it's about to start tomorrow, tree trimming throughout the city. And with that, I thank you for your time. I hope I didn't go through it too quickly. And I'm, I will now open you, this up for any and all questions that you may have. And I also want to, uh, invite everybody that's hearing this that we're having a an, a swearing-in ceremony for me, which I'd love to spotlight. At 7:30 today at the West Miami Recreational Center, all residents are welcome.
Anybody from the table? Go ahead.
Just, just to highlight again, page 59, can you go back one slide there, Mr. Manager? So last year, we lowered the millage rate 4.3% from what I recall.
Uh, I think, I think that's true, yeah.
And this year, we're proposing at the moment, obviously open to discussion, uh, more than 5% reduction in millage.
I believe it's a 5% currently?
It's a little bit over 5%, like 5.3.
5.3.
So just under 10% millage reduction in the last two years, basically. And look at all the amenities and look at all that the city's going to be able to accomplish still. So I think that's, uh, a testament to the work that the mayor and the commission's doing, as well as our new manager as well, and we're very excited to have you. And, uh, again, I do want to reiterate that there is an event tonight, that he's getting sworn in, and we're very lucky to have you. And we're looking forward to accomplishing everything that's on this list.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Manager, about the, uh, the tree trimming truck. I would like to know how we ended up ordering a tree trimming truck, uh, for 2025. Who, who, who did that?
Well, Vice Mayor, that was done way before my time here, but the contract that was written has two, two, two caveats in it.
Okay, the contract written by whom?
The previous administration, the previous.
So it had nothing to do with the county?
No, sir.
It was written by us?
It's what was signed by us, yes, sir.
But how do we end up with a, a piece of equipment that we direly need? How is it in the world that we end up buying a 2025 model?
The contracts clearly state the 2025 chassis, chassis.
Why was that done?
I don't know, I wasn't here, I can't answer that, I don't know. I can tell you that we had that funding first. Miami Springs, Miami Shores had it second, but they already have their tree trimming truck on the roads.
You know, I, I mean, this is something that's really troubling because, you know, I, I, I implored Commissioner, uh, then Rebecca Sosa to, to, uh, to procure this, this grant to us because we direly needed this piece of equipment. And she did. So I want to know how in the hell we ended up buying a 2025 mo, model when we needed one now? Is it because we couldn't get one? Or, or why? I, I, I want to know, can you, can you please try to find out?
I, I will try to find out, I've asked the questions, I haven't been able to get an answer. I can tell you that if the answer is even that, I would have a hard, hard time with it, considering that Miami Shores started after us and they already have theirs.
I mean, I, I, I think that everyone here should be concerned about that because that affects the residents. I know, you know, dozens and dozens of residents that want their trees cut, that are asking for this service, and it's a great disservice to have done this. So us sitting here, okay, I mean, I mean, I, I, I would like to know why this was done. What was the reasoning? Was there no trucks available? Or there was something else to it? I would like to know, so if you can please find out.
I will, I will, I will try, I will try, Vice Mayor, I will ask the questions again, but I've asked them and I haven't really made.
Works or Public Works, um.
He's out on vacation.
He's on vacation, okay.
I can tell, I can tell you this, it, it, it has cost, it is costing the city money. It, it is, it, it is costing us money because we're having to pay for tree trimming from an outside service. We had a backlog of at least 35 homes that wanted trees trimmed, and I took the initiative of being able to get an outside service to be able to do so.
Which, that I, I don't frankly, um, I don't believe that's, that, that number can't be, can't be accurate because I know, I know of a ton of residents that have told me they've been on a year-long waitlist for tree trimming. And the number for our C is 35, so there's, there's some disconnect there on, on, on where the numbers were being recorded, and where the address should be recorded for tree trimming. Because that, that number, a lot of those, a lot of that number, that backlog are, are ones that we actually sourced recently, right? They're, that we sourced, we, we went out and we asked for it now. Uh, and a lot of people frankly, um, probably think they're on a list. And they're, they're not reaching out to us because they think they're already on the list.
And if we don't have them on a list, I would, I would ask the residents to please send us in the information. Because the old tree trimming truck, we've been able to fix it and it's, and it's working again, so we can get back to the, to provide the service.
We have a private company that has been doing round-the-clock tree trimming for, for how long?
They were supposed to start today or tomorrow, they're going to be here for a couple of months. And then after that, we're going to.
And after that, we'll go back to regular share of this from the city.
Yes.
So ju, just to be clear, Mr. Manager, I, I would like a memo written by your office determining the reason why this was done. I believe that the, uh, previous city manager is still under contract with us as a consultant. So if you can please sit down with her and ask her and pinpoint the reasons of why this was done. I mean, to me, I think this is a big deal. You know, we had a piece of equipment that almost injured one of our city employees that got stuck on the bucket. And the fire department had to come and rescue him. And just when we get the funds to get one, we end up purchasing a piece of equipment for 2025? We're, you know, we're in 2023.
Well, it's a 2025 chassis, which means, like everything in the car world, that means probably late 2024. Um, with the 2025, but the, the point is, it was allocated to the city in 2022, I believe, or 2021. And a city after us got the, got the funding and they already have their tree trimming truck.
I, I would like to know, I mean, I don't know about any of you here, but I, I would like to know. I, I mean, this is, to me, this is, it, it's, it's just insane. How can someone, you know, make a decision like that? And, and then, uh, to clarify here, I see that Commissioner Cabrera's office is, is, is he going to, uh, give us a grant for, to buy a new, uh, uh, tree trimming truck?
Uh, the, the grant's still there, the money is there.
Oh, is that the same?
Yeah, it's the same money, the money's still there, he has the money, he has basically indicated to us that that's, that's our money, we can use it uh, for that, or for other, any other purposes that we need, but we still need a tree trimming truck, so I'd rather keep it there.
So I have another question, Mr. Manager. As far as reserves go, where, where are we, um, with this budget and, and reserves? In, in other words, you know, are piggy-banked? What, what have we got in our piggy bank for unforeseen events?
Well, that's the fund, the fund policy that we passed when my first meeting. You have a little bit over 4 million dollars that are basically locked away that you can't touch.
Okay.
So at any moment in the near future, that's the minimal amount that you're going to have in the bank that you can't touch, so we never have to face a crisis again in the City of West Miami.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll.
And that, and that's kudos to you guys for passing it and understanding it. And realizing that with that, you know that you will have that as a, as your minimum at all times. And I hope that as the years go by, we continue to add more and more to it. It, the more reserves you have, the healthier you are.
I, I apologize, you know, my memory fails me, but, you know, uh, we don't have a staff, we don't have, I don't even have an office. So, you know, um, it's, it's, it's kind of difficult to decipher, you know, all the information in a day in and day out. And, you know, we don't have a salary or anything, so, um, it's, it's just, you know, wanting to, to, to serve the city. So, um, maybe I, I do need to spend a little bit more time, um, reading and, and paying more attention, but, um, uh, I apologize, sorry.
No, no, these are, these are questions to be out in the open. So the, uh, in regards to this budget, uh, I like where we're starting out in the millage. This is obviously, so everyone understands, this millage rate is the highest we can go. We can't go up, but we can go down from, from here, uh, in this process. And it represents a 5%, over 5% decrease, which means at the starting point that if you have a homestead, if you have a homestead residence in the City of West Miami, you are actually going to be paying less than you did in dollars, um, last year. So that's a, that's an incredible direction, considering especially even the county now. You know, every other tax bill you're going to get on that sheet, you're actually paying more, regardless of how, of how they kept their, their millage rates. Uh, and we're actually going to be giving a savings to the residents while delivering better service and capital projects. Uh, I want to highlight a few things in this budget. Um, one is the garbage cans, which I've been asked for for a long time from residents. Uh, yes, it's a great service for our, for our, uh, it's a great thing for our employees that won't have to be, uh, you know, backbending out there. But it's also incredible for families in the city who have to have three, four cans to, uh, to, to put out the, the trash for their, for their, uh, their household. So they, I know that's been asked by, by, for a long time, and we're finally going to deliver on that. We're adding a lot of park spaces, a lot of park, uh, improvements. Mo, most importantly in this budget, we're adding drainage that has been probably at, you know, needed for over 30 years um, in a lot of these communities, and Juneteenth, actually, we, we had a storm event where you, you, you really saw it, uh, where we needed the drainage. And, uh, th, these are, these are major projects that are, have major benefits for those communities. Um, and are going to increase the property valuation to those communities, now they're not going to have any water challenges. Um, so there's, there's a lot, there's a lot in this budget. Uh, this is probably going to be frankly, um, one of the most transformative budgets in this city's history. I think, I truly believe that the, the capital improvements that this budget is going to put in and some of the changes, um, and improvements along, um, administration, the change that this budget is, is implementing are going to be transformative for this city. Um, and, uh, and I, I think this from here forward is going to be the new standard of, of how the city, uh, operates after all these capital improvements are put in. Um, I would like to address the, uh, millage rate. Um, I know we're, we're at a point right now, it's, it's a very, very good starting point. If this was the end, I, you know, I don't think anyone could complain. But I, I, I would like to talk to you, Mr. Manager, about, about even looking at getting closer to that rollback rate. Because I, I, I think there's room, I think the residents, especially now with inflation, all that's going on, on the economy, um, especially all the residents could really, could really use some more relief. Um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it, but I, I, I do want to explore continuing to look more closer to that rollback rate.
My, my doors are always open to you all. Uh, one, one thing I did not mention that I do want to mention, and I want to give you credit for, Mayor, is that we found um, a plot of land that is actually plotted to us off of.
In the Villas of West Miami on 60, it's on 12th and 65th, what do you say?
Which in this budget, we're proposing to make that into a dog park. So it's a green area that we have, simple, it's easy, it's us, put a few things out there, and we have a dog park for our residents.
Thank you, thank you for highlighting that.
I'll tell you what, I, I know a lot of residents are going to be very happy about this. I, I know a lot of them that are going to be very happy.
Make a comment.
Go ahead.
You have to be sure the, the Congresswoman, um, Elvira Salazar, just bring the money and allocate the money.
Yeah, so I, I want to make sure I, 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 I address that. So she's, she's, she's obviously, she's a, she's a big supporter.
She promised to you that.
Yeah, she's, she's a big supporter of the city, but at this point, it's in the hands of the EPA. And we are working, uh, with, with Mr., with, with, with Mr., with Robert to, to, to administer that grant. So at this point, it's the EPA and us, the money's allocated, it's in a lockbox, we just had to make sure that we properly uh, put all our compliance in, uh, to, to be able to, 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 uh, to obtain that, those fundings.
And, uh, Mr. Manager, we have to be sure to work hard with the grants because the engineer, you have to allocate, be allocated by the December 31st, 24. So we have to make a team work here, hard workers, work a day and night because the money is there, but we have to grab it.
We've already had, we've already had, we've already had that conversation, we've already had that conversation that we got a very busy year ahead of us.
Did you hear that, Mr. Engineer? It's, it's at night too, so apparently you're going to be here at night, so get, get comfortable. Get comfortable because you're going to be here at night, apparently. Does anybody else from the table have any comments or questions on the agenda? I'm sorry, on the, on the budget, preliminary budget? All right, at this time, um, Madam Clerk, is there's a resolution?
Yes, item 11C, resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, establishing the 2023 tentative millage rates upon all real and personal property within the city limits for the payments of the amounts appropriated in the 2023, 2024 preliminary budget.
Motion.
Second.
Does it have the, does it have the, the, the rate here?
Uh, it's in the resolution.
It's in the resolution, okay.
5.5 per each thousand for a total combined millage rate of 6.5000.
Okay.
6.25.
We make a motion to drop it to 6.25, which was requested, yes, ma'am, it was requested of me and I did the presentation of that.
All right, so motion as amended? We have a motion as amended?
Motion as amended.
Second as amended.
We have a motion and a second, call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is the Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, adopting the 2023-2024 preliminary budget.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, call the roll.
We are the same, we are the same number, right?
At 6.25, yes, sir.
Yeah, we're saying, no, I mean, in the water, we are the same number, yeah.
Oh, in the water.
Oh, that's next item, yeah.
Yeah.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Next item?
Next item, item 11E, Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, adopting the Preliminary Water Enterprise Fund Budget for the year 2023-2024 in the amount, in the sum of 1 million 57,500 dollars.
Motion.
This is for a.
Well, I think this is the first year we don't, in a while, we haven't transferred money from the general fund to the water fund, so that's positive.
Motion by Commissioner Chavez?
We have a motion?
Yes.
We have a second?
Commissioner Blanca?
Call the roll.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca? Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis? Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 12, Council Agenda Item, non this evening, item 13, good of the order.
Anyone for good of the order? I'd just like to congratulate you on your budget and thank you to Ms. Mercedes Lehman as well for your work and everyone involved in the budget. It came out very, very nice. I look forward to continuing to work on this for the next, what is it, a couple of months? Two months, as we finalize our next year of government. So thank you.
Mayor, and I would be remiss if I didn't say, could, who's the Finance Department, they've been very, very helpful and very, very helped me along the ways of figuring out what to do and how to do it and check my numbers on numerous occasions, and I'm very, very grateful for that.
Thank you.
So we have to recognize Luli here, Mercedes, right?
Yes. All right.
Thank you for coming.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.